Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first part of our meeting today is two workshops. I will go ahead and call the board. Our district attorney, Chris Tinkell, is here. Supervisor Pym is here. Supervisor Banks is present. Supervisor Fineberg is present. Supervisor Dye is present. Supervisor Clary is present. Our district manager, Chris Shumaker, is present. And Stephen Blum, with an info mark, is our CPA, and he is present. And with that, I return this meeting over to you, Chris, to start the workshop.
Sure. We're starting today discussing issues related to the roundabout at Commerce Lakes. And there were several issues related to the district. One, amending the landscape sign drainage utilities and the street lighting agreement that we have with the county. And on one side, there's been discussion whether we're going to turn that right-of-way over to the county, or whether we're going to provide a license agreement for them to work in that county right-of-way on Commerce Lakes. We also want to discuss briefly whether we were going to upgrade the lighting and irrigation and landscaping in that roundabout, or whether we were going to go with just the standard county signage and lighting and landscaping due to additional cost. And also, the end will really be, it's pretty standard, it'll be a joint project agreement with Lee County and their engineers. So while the work is being done on the roundabout, it'll be utility relocation, and that's quite significant. There's two ways to approach it, but it's the quarter million dollar or half a million dollar question. And right now, of course, the utility department, due to the age of the lines there, we're looking at just a total replacement of those facilities at that intersection. And what I'd like to do is introduce David Murphy, P.E. He's a deputy director for Lee County, and he's here today to talk about that project, and he has some staff members here with him today to also address any issues we may have or answer any questions. And with that, I'd like to bring Dave up just to give an overview from a county perspective.
I really came just to be able to answer any of your questions on it. We talked last month and went over the roundabout pretty extensively. As you know, in 2017, the county took over Gateway and the west edge, west leg of Commerce Drive, and we did not take the east leg of Commerce Drive. Since then, we took it over, we had a lot of calls about how difficult Commerce and Griffin were. And we did our look at it, and first it didn't warrant a signal, and about six months later, we looked at it again, and it did warrant signals at both those intersections. So it went into our program. We have a pot of about $1.5 million a year that we spend on intersection improvements throughout the county. It rated so, it was high in accidents and the volume of traffic, so it moved right to the top of the list, which is possible. So it went to the top of the list. We funded the design in last year. So we're into the design of Commerce and the Griffin roundabouts. The cost came in much higher, so, because we only got $1.5 million, this project is going to probably cost, the construction is $1.5 million that we're going to be spending. So instead of using the whole intersection improvement, we actually, the board of county commissioners, budgeted it in the CIP. We still have the $1.5 for other projects throughout the county, and they moved the construction into the CIP. So we have money this year in our new fiscal year, we started October 1st, for building this roundabout. So we're at about sixty, sixty percent plans, coming to work out some issues with Gateway, what do you want it to look like? You know, we know what's inside your community, and we want you guys to be happy with the landscaping, the lighting, the signage and everything when it's done. We talked about that last month. So we're looking for those answers, and also, how do you want to handle the right-of-way? Last month, we talked about you could just give us a permit, we'll build it, you maintain it, it's still your side of that right-of-way, the East Commerce. Talked about giving us an easement that would allow us to make, to maintain the right-of-way that we're building, so the pavement that we're building, we maintain in Commerce. Or you could turn over the right-of-way to us, and then it would be our right-of-way, we maintain the right-of-way. And we handle it just like we handled Gateway, so we'd do an addendum to the existing agreement that when we took over Gateway Boulevard, Gateway Services would continue maintaining the landscaping, they would take care of the lighting. Now, if we liked the roundabout, we would maintain the lighting of the roundabout, and you guys would maintain everything around that. And the signage, again, if you want your signs out there, you pay for the extra, those costs of the signs and put them out, you maintain them, or you let us put up our standard signs, and then we maintain them. So if a car runs into it, knocks it down, we send our crews out and fix it. If a car runs into it and it's your sign, you send somebody out there and fix it. So we're here just to get those answers so we can move forward. We're looking to try to finish this, get to 100% plans by December, so in January, we can send it to procurement to bid this out and start constructions hopefully sometime in April, is our goal.
Will you explain the decision to make, to do a roundabout instead of a signal? I think that there's a lot of people that are questioning why one was chosen over the other.
Well, we looked at both of those alternatives. And what it really came down to is the signal doesn't reduce the accidents at the intersection, it just changes them. So instead of, you get a lot of, right now, we're getting a lot of T-bone crashes where people pull out and get hit by someone coming down the gateway, which is nonstop. You get rear-end accidents, people stop in front of you that you think they're going to go through, so you hit them. You have people running red lights, so you still have fatalities at signals. So when we looked at the neighborhood, the traffic volumes, we determined that the roundabout was a much safer, effective way of moving traffic through that intersection. During peak flows, they operate about the same, but during non-peak times, which is 20 hours out of the day, the roundabout is much more efficient and there's less wait time for the people using it.
I have just two questions. And from a cost perspective, the difference from a light and roundabout, or is this one...
They're pretty much the same. With the signal, the signal itself is about $600,000 just for the mast arms and the cabinets and the conduits to run the signal. But then you've got to build a turn lane, so depending on how much you've got to add to turn lanes, queuing right turn lanes and so forth, that starts adding pavement. It also adds area that the utilities would need to be relocated anyways, because we're expanding the footprint of the intersection. So with the roundabout, we're expecting to be somewhere around $1.2 to $1.5 million for the construction. The signal would end up somewhere about the same. One of the big differences is the signal costs somewhere between $6,000 and $10,000 a year to maintain. Where a roundabout, it doesn't have any maintenance costs.
And I have one more question. So in regards to the lighting, if we went with the county's lighting structure, and I think the board, I won't speak for everyone, but I think some of our lighting, especially on Gateway Boulevard, is probably a little antiquated, and at some point, we talked about, you know, having a lighting plan and making some upgrades. Is it possible for us to have conversations, or would it be advantageous for us to look at lighting upgrades, so if we're going to use county lighting in that style and structure, would it also be pertinent at that time to look at a, an upgrade, just, let's just say, down Gateway Boulevard to a county style, to keep everything more uniform and maybe even upgrade it to like an LED type environment? Would that be something that we would consider, or that scope would be something that we, would definitely be managed separately, but should that be part of the discussion?
With the existing agreement that we have with taking over Gateway, Gateway's responsible for those lights. So we're not, the county, Lee County DOT isn't interested in changing those lights out and maintaining those lights. So those lights would be yours, and you can do what you want. You can go to our county standard, but it's kind of a, it's really in Gateway's ballpark for that.
That's it.
I'm a little confused by the meeting today. I, maybe I was sleeping the last meeting. I thought we were going to have staff and select people meet with the county first to go over the issues that we brought up, one of which was, we're not paying for the, what do you call it, utility relocation. I take it that that, either we had a phone call, or we had something, but that didn't appear to be on the table anymore.
Well, in Lee County's DOT's ballpark, we never had it on the table. Your utility is your responsibility, and our right-of-way to relocate those and meet our county codes. So as part of this project, you're required as a utility to take care of that.
So that wasn't a discussion issue?
Well, it was a discussion, it was this quick. We don't have the money in our budget, and that's not our responsibility. It's not our responsibility, though. It's a utility, it's a utility responsibility.
That's an easy way to get out of it.
We do that through the whole county, that's a federal law.
We spent a million dollars of Gateway's money to bring Gateway Boulevard in Griffin, drive up to your specifications before you would take it over. And now you're going to tell us that we're going to have to spend another half million dollars just because you're going to build a roundabout instead of a traffic light?
Well, the utilities were not brought up to our standard. The road itself was brought up to our standard, but the utilities, which is a code, which would be that they'd all be encased underneath hard pavement, that was not brought up to standard. And that's where we're sitting here today, is that it isn't county standard, and now we're expanding the road. We don't want your water main blowing out in the middle of the road, shutting down all the traffic on Commerce and Gateway. That's why, that's why that rule is there.
But still, it's apparent that if you build a traffic signal instead of this roundabout, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
And that's not true, because we still have, the footprint of the road's going to expand because we're going to have a right turn lane, we have dual, maybe even dual left turn lanes in some locations, two straight lanes. So when you start adding all that pavement out there, now your utilities are not encased under those facilities, underneath that pavement. So you'd still be in the same ballpark.
And with a signal, you'd give us access to the north?
No. You know, with a signal too, when we looked at a signal, it would close access to that one, to a restaurant out there. It would have, it would be a solid median up and down each direction.
You're telling me that every time you make an improvement on an intersection, that the city or somebody has to pay for all these changes in the underground utilities?
That's correct. If you want to talk to LCU, Lee County Utilities, they spend millions of dollars, they budget, I think $15 million a year moving facilities and relocating facilities when we expand these roadways.
And you're going to view this to us again when you go to an interchange, roundabout at Griffin and Gateway?
It's a smaller footprint, I would say probably yes. There's probably going to be some utilities that need to be encased.
There's more utilities at Griffin than there are at...
But the roundabout's a smaller footprint.
Okay, that's interesting. Why is the roundabout, they're both 150-foot right-of-way there, why is the one at, where they differ?
I didn't...
And one in Commerce passes, splitting, right coming, split. I don't have the copy from the Griffin, but...
Because of the traffic movements that are there, the traffic movements are different.
Okay, because you don't have a crossway, you only have the Towne Lakes Office Park coming from the west.
Right, so the traffic movements are less, so we were able to condense it a little bit.
Well, back to the question Chris had, I was going to, back to the question that Chris had brought post to us at the last meeting. We went out and got pricing, and the cost of maintaining our 40-foot single pole with the dual lights, like the ones we have all the way up and down Gateway Boulevard, that looks like that price has gotten a little exorbitant, that our only choice would be to go to the county design. It's going to look weird, but I guess it is what it is. But as far as the signage, I would definitely be objection to changing the sign to the county's standard steel. I mean, it's going to look like Lehigh here, but it looks horrible. I would much rather put our money and invest in having the decorated sign that we have in the construction area, that we pay for that up there. We don't pay the toll, and we pay the differential, is what I understand. We pay the differential.
That's correct.
And then on the landscaping, I don't know that I've seen what the county's got versus what we think we want, yet to know one way or the other on the landscaping.
You know, landscaping after the project's done, if you don't like the core, you can add to it.
Mrs. Clary?
Oh, thank you. I'm also going to agree with Mr. Tingle. At the last meeting, I thought that someone was going to negotiate for the land they want for the price of the pipe there, and I thought that's where we were at at that time.
I'd be glad to respond to that.
I was going to, I was going to lie, you didn't.
The negotiating is, the county would be glad to take the right-of-way from Gateway, which of course, then they'd be responsible for the operation and maintenance of that. And if we don't want to try to make a deal, which they're not interested in, or having the funding, they'll just ask us for a right-of-way use agreement and then work within the right-of-way.
The last time they took this right-of-way road, it cost us a million dollars.
Right, and this one, it's, your utilities needs to be relocated, but we're willing to take that road as is, and we're going to improve 800 feet of it as part of the roundabout, because that's about where we go. But we're willing to take past that to what Gateway currently maintains. So we're willing to take that additional liability away from it.
So what we're saying is the two options are, we have a use agreement with, we keep it, and/or we give it to them, and we're still back to status quo on the utilities.
Correct.
And no, no galeros change hands.
Correct. We just, we just lose the maintenance cost for that 800 feet of Commerce Lakes, and also...
Oh, actually, it's about $2,000, isn't it about $1,000, $1,500 feet?
Go back to the sidewalk.
Because we go, we go back to whatever you're maintaining, and there's another entity that maintains past that point to the east.
What it's supposed to be.
County utilities, when I was at Hernando for 10 years, anytime even like the state road came through, and what we ended up doing was everywhere we could, we put the utilities on private property, because then it becomes a totally different issue.
Yes.
But if they're in the right-of-way, it's your dime to relocate them.
I don't think Westinghouse Gateway Community's thought about that 1980.
Thank you, Mrs. Clary, still has it?
Yes, I do, thank you. I'm concerned, okay, coming off Commerce Drive, and going to turn left, okay? And because you have here, the way the roundabout goes, I'm going to use the handles, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Okay, one of those just round and straight, and then the other goes round, and you're going to have that person come in, and he's got to go around, okay? I'm more concerned that there's going to be more accidents there than there are now.
Well, all I can tell you is national studies on roundabouts have shown one, the personal injury accidents drop dramatically, because they're all side crashes when they come in. So you have a lot of, you get property damages, but people don't get injured typically in a roundabout. And there is, I'm not telling you there's not going to be any accidents, there's going to be accidents in a roundabout, and people need to learn how to drive through them. They're fairly new down here. Other states have embraced them, and they're putting them out everywhere. But here, we're kind of looking at the need. Four-lane road, roundabouts handle four-lane, four-lane roads very well, they don't handle six-lane roads very well at all. So we have a lot of six-lanes roads out here, Lee County's not looking at putting any roundabouts there. But you're right, you need to get in the right lanes, the correct lane when you're entering a roundabout. So if you want to go right, you certainly want to be in the right lane so you can make that movement. And depending on the signs, the right lane can usually go right or straight. If you want to turn, go straight or left, you get in the left lane, into a four-lane roundabout. And we do have signs out ahead of time that kind of tell you that. So if you want to move right, straight, say right lane, and for the left lane, it goes straight, left, or U-turn. So there's advanced signing on that, so if you look at it, you'll know which lane to go into.
We talked about sidewalks, the pedestrians, which look like a button that would flash last time. Okay, could you just explain how that would work?
Sure. Standard design for a roundabout, when you're crossing two lanes of traffic, so a four-lane road, two-lane roundabout, there's, some of those legs, you have two lanes you're crossing, it's standard designed to put what's called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And what it is, is a pedestrian sign that has lights on it, and when you push the button, those lights are activated and start flashing to draw the eye to, of the driver to that sign, knowing that there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk and you need to yield to that pedestrian per se along.
How does that work when you, I'll follow it up, how does that work when you've had somebody going around the corner? Let's say I'm crossing the northbound lane, and I hit the flasher. Well, the guy's coming from the south going north, they're going to see it. But the guy's coming from the north going south, that want to go around, they're going to see it.
Well, first, you're not, you never cross in the roundabout itself, so there are always legs coming off. So when you get, you cross the two lanes of traffic, you push the button, you activate, you cross two lanes, you get to an island, you go to the other button, you push another button...
So there is, there's multiple buttons?
There's two buttons. You push the button again, it lights and flashes up, shining it for the people coming southbound, and then you cross those two lanes.
In Lee County, I know there's a roundabout at Crystal Plantation, and is there any others?
So one over by Cook.
Yeah, we've got a few of them out there, yeah.
How often are you replacing the street signs in those locations because they get run over?
I don't have an answer for that. I'd have to check with our operations on Crystal Plantation, whichever location, see how often we're out there. So I really, I really don't know. I know Crystal Plantation, we had motors, two motorcycles that went through, it didn't slow down, and it went through kind of the middle.
Nice.
So, I can't...
How do you miss a roundabout?
And that's one reason we light them up too, so it's harder to miss them, so they don't just come up on you. But I can't, can't actually how quick, how often. We have signal cabinets that go down, we get a signal cabinet probably hit every two weeks. We have 450 signals out there, and about every two weeks, we have someone that runs off the road and hits a signal cabinet, shuts down all the lights. As for the signs, we get signs knocked down continuously. Because we have two crews that, all they do is inspect signs and put new signs up that get knocked down or worn out.
The only thing that I still haven't seen, and I don't know if Tetra Tech's coming or if they have it, I have yet, I've seen all the utilities save the drainage, and I've not seen how the drainage is going to work, especially in that northeast quadrant. That is a mess. Is it, is the pipe being directed to an existing sewer somewhere? The only big sewer is the one up by the FBI building.
We're tying into the existing storm sewer that's out there, so we're rebuilding the road, putting inlets in the road where they need to be, and then tying that into the storm sewer.
In that intersection, Chris tried to get it wrong, but there aren't any inlets. It's all swales.
On the northeast?
Northeast corner?
Yeah, corner, there's an inlet probably 10 feet from the road.
Where at?
By the restroom.
Where's it going to?
I believe it connects to the inlet that is just south of the FBI driveway. There's another inlet south of the FBI building.
Yes, but is there, is it open channel flow or is it piped into the 54-HI?
No, it's a pipe.
Our plans, our plans don't show that, so if you've found something to verify that that's there...
But our plan is, since there's going to be a sidewalk on that corner, we're going to be, we're taking this way to make sure the water flows into those existing inlets.
That's my concern, there is drainage.
I mean, we certainly share that, the drainage plan with your engineer to review it.
Okay, I didn't, I haven't talked to them in a couple of weeks, but last I heard, I didn't know that we had a drainage plan or section view.
Yeah, there is, we have a drainage plan, and we've provided for Tetra Tech.
Okay, okay, I'll get with them and take a look at it. Because it sounds like you know the pipe that I'm not aware of.
Do you have any other surprises for us coming out?
The only surprises I know are the two roundabouts at this time that we're doing improvements in here. Obviously, the school's building a roundabout at their entrance on Griffin. Glad they got permitted through us, and the school's paying for that.
The school roundabout, those water mains, are you responsible for those two?
You know, that topic hasn't come up, but you would be.
So I guess at this time, I asked the board, do you want to bring 4A, the action item on this particular subject forward? Can you go ahead and discuss it at this point?
I think we're seeing the workshop session, I think we have to wait until the meeting is...
Okay, you're right. You are correct. Sorry, just trying to be expedient.
Yeah, I thought we were in a position that we're on a timeline here, and that you guys needed to have a response, how we're going.
Right, I mean, we need to, for sure on the lighting, we need to know which direction you want to go on the lighting, so we can, your lighting, your lights are different than our lights, so that changes the lighting plan to get the levels that you need out there. The poles get moved a little bit, so we need to know what pole and fixture we're going to be using, whether it's ours or yours. The signs, that's not a big issue. We put our signs in there, and then we can replace them, or we can work that through later on, that's not the end of the world. But we, I'd really like to know what we're going to do, so we can work that out with Chris and...
And the issue of the, whether it's an easement or a tape on the road.
Right, that's important, because we're going to need to get that all approved, get an agreement between Lee County and Gateway on what, how that's going to work.
And even on that tape, we would still have the signs and the street lighting that's associated with Commerce Lakes Drive East that's there right now.
Right, we would, what we're doing is just amending the existing agreement. Have you seen that existing agreement?
The original agreement?
Yeah, and we took it over into 2017.
It's left with a base, since I've looked at that.
Oh, okay. So we're really looking at just amending that, adding that legal description to that agreement. And so everything would be the same, what Gateway's taking care of today, we continue taking care of that in this piece, and whatever Lee County DOT agreed to take care of, we also take care of that. So it's, I know pavement for sure we're maintaining.
And I don't know if this is directed at Steve or not, but, so this happens within this physical budget. Did we allocate any dollars for this work?
No.
No. So we'd have to have a funding plan for it.
Our funding plan is, we just moved approximately $916,000 from a lawn issue that was retired that was from the enterprise fund. I have the details on that, and it's strictly for maintenance renewal.
Okay, so it'll come from the East Red Fund, right?
Rainy day.
We need, is a little more serious.
Unless Mr. Tingle spent it already.
Okay, yeah, that's all right.
Any other questions, or?
Don't be so, please, Tom.
You do.
It is on the agenda to discuss this.
I'm not leaving, so I'll be here until you're done with our topic.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Next workshop.
The next workshop is on meeting procedures. And there's a short agenda item, and I also have a, attached to the agenda item, list table of contents and a draft of general procedure rules that Tony provided, and then attached to me by other community development districts. And if I may, put Tony in charge of this.
Before, before Tony starts questioning, unless my computer was malfunctioning, which it does quite often, I got this document years ago, which was last modified in 2016, March 17, 2016, and it's got beaucoup chapters, but this one that's in our board book only goes to A-1.04. Is, are we going to get A-5 through 11 later, or are we being spoofed this stuff to where we can take it?
My understanding, in Tony's personal record, my understanding was that the workshop was meeting, probably called rules of procedure as far as conduct of the board meeting. So what I did, I split it off, I split off just those portions during reviews, notices, form, the first four.
Okay, so you just wanted to...
It's by design.
Yeah, okay.
It was by design.
I thought my...
It wasn't a trick question, or was anything tricky there?
Okay, and it looks like to me that you have gone back and taken the one, the old one, and modified it already.
Yeah, there are suggested changes in there, this, I did not redline them, I figured it'd be like a fresh start by reading those, like the first set of ideas. But if you'd like, I can go through and sort of highlight some of the areas in this draft, in addition to or different from the prior version. Mrs. Clary, Samuel, I think you suggested we have this, or?
Is there any, like, suggestion?
If that's the board's pleasure. Yes, and like anything else, the floor legislature in their internal wisdom constantly amends the statutes dealing with a whole bunch of topics, including special districts, CDDs and other special districts, and sometimes the rules apply to CDDs sometimes. And so this, what I've added, based upon reviewing of other rules and other statutes, adding some couple sections and clarifying some sections on the rules procedure for Gateway. Recognizing that the legislature has, in multiple chapters of Florida statutes unrelated to each other, various sections dealing with business of the CDT. You have Chapter 190 is the fundamental basic charter of all... all community development districts in Florida. You have chapter one nineteen, that is the public records law, that's voluminous and it applies to CDDs. You have some sections of chapter two eighty-seven that apply, compared to the Consulting Negotiation Act. You have some sections of chapter two fifty-five dealing with construction that apply. You have, I mean, so they, in some sections of chapter one eighty-nine that apply. So you have different other chapters where certain subsections apply to CDDs. I, I could put all of them in here and it'd be a hundred pages long.
Oh.
And it's, what, and what I've added primarily is updating certain sections I think are helpful to have in one book. And so the fundamental procedural matters are in, in one book of the district's rules that's easy for the board and the public. And it provides, at the end of each one of these, it provides a statutory site or basis for it. By way of example, just clarifying and added in A dash one point oh one, that subsection C, that talks about the rules and how they're effective. It's almost always implied that it's effective upon the resolution and must otherwise indicate. But I thought it'd be helpful to add that C about when a rule amendment is effective, about suspending rules. And again, that just gives some additional guidelines to the board without having to dive into the statutes. And not all of that is in the statutes. There, in subsection A dash eight point one point oh two about filling a vacancy. Right now, the legislature doesn't have a set timeframe within which you have to fill the vacancy. But it's always sort of aspirational to do within a period of time to board can continue to function. Right now it's sixty. I put a ninety again just for discussion purposes. That's the only change in that. In B, on page four, it changes it from, you know, again, makes it a majority to track the statute better. And it talks about how you have to be present physically to count for the establishment of the quorum. And then it also adds telephonically, video conference, teleconference, and expands the areas in which a board member who is absent can participate fully upon a determination by the board, exceptional circumstances exist, once a physical quorum is established. And that's always the key, that a majority of the board. So if the board was to go down to three members, a majority of the board, technically it'd be two. And then the third person could be out of town if that was to happen. In subsection C, clarifying that at the first board meeting after each election, I added or appointment, which is consistent with the statute, just reorganization. And then the parts about the chair, I changed it from chairwoman or chair, to me the chair, just got the word chair in there as opposed to chairperson, and added a clarifying language about the chairman pro tem, when either the chair or the vice chair are available. With regards to going to page five, the record book, again, just expanding on that, it says Kyler County should be Lee County. Again, this is a template I was using from another district.
Who's this from?
This is some proposed change I'm making for the Lally Community Development District. I'll be recommending updating the other districts also in Kyler County. Now, the meetings, because, again, the legislature has changed certain requirements for holding a meetings. And I also wanted to clarify that the meetings are, shall be held in a public building when available or in a building in the county accessible to the public. We've had those discussions before and that's just clarifying. Like the statute says, at times, the attorney general has opined that in order to have a meeting accessible to the public, if you expect a large turnout, you have to make accommodations in another facility that we've done before. The board has done that before because it's really not accessible to the public. If you know three hundred people will show, you only have room for fifty. So that's why we provide that flexibility in there. In G, now in G, it's at page six. Voting requirements are, in Florida, you have to vote on every matter that comes in front of you unless you have a legitimate bona fide conflict of interest under the statute. You can't say, my neighbor's going to be annoyed with me, my wife's on top of me, my kids will run away from home. You can't use any of those issues. You have to have a bona fide conflict of interest and you file the requisite form. What I've also would have added though is a new paragraph based upon new law that came into effect June of this year. For this district, the district does provide email addresses. Other districts, the people still use the personal email addresses. It is always recommended not to do what they do. But now it requires that the districts provide an email address and every February, the district has to send those email addresses up to the Commission on Ethics. And the purpose of that is, I didn't put all in here, beginning in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the Commission on Ethics is going to be sending financial disclosure forms by email and then you can file that electronically. So this is, every year this is a new, by December thirty-first and February, we have all these requirements for the email addresses. H is something that has been in this district. It was, again, this is not required by the statute. H on page six, it goes over to top of page seven, with regards to once the board announces competitive solicitation that board members are not subject to interaction. That's not in the statute, but the board has the ability to have some additional requirements. But one good comment that was made on my other districts was carving out an exception for vendors that may be vendors per UHOA. You may be dealing with a vendor for UHOA that's doing UHOA work and this would arguably preclude you as a board member from any conversation with them about any matter. So that's, I think it's a good caveat. That came up recently at a board meeting. And A dash one point oh three, web-based public access, that's because of the new requirements by the legislature that's, that's in there. Public meetings and workshops, it's been expanded substantially. And to make sure that the various notices, especially four, five and six are included in the meeting notices. And I believe at the beginning of the board book, we have those notices with regards to the ADA. That's an impression notice that went out for the annual publication. Getting down to B, the agenda, and this is always, again, the legislature in their infinite wisdom requires this of CDDs and other districts, but not of cities or counties. So I just find it incredible that you have these huge counties with these huge budgets and these huge MIS staffs and everything else don't have to post their agenda on the website like CDDs do. So again, the legislature, and I'm being covered in chief in their infinite wisdom, have determined that CDDs and other special districts need to be more accessible from an internet-based perspective to the community. So the agenda has to be posted on the district website and if there are electronic, there are materials available in electronic form for agenda items that are available seven days in advance, they need to be posted with the agenda on the website. And the district's been doing that by virtue of the timeframes where the cutoff date is Tuesday afternoon and then Maryland posts it on Thursday. So that's, again, it's administratively, it's a pain in the neck. And then we have our ADA issues, but that's the requirement that came to law effect a couple of years ago.
So to answer your point of clarity on that, does it, it wasn't very clear reading through it, is there a minimum amount of information required in the, in the board book? So for example, if you have, if there's an item on the agenda that you were going to supply additional information, does that information have to be included in the agenda or can it just be made available either at the time or post the meeting? Like, so what's, what's required?
Yeah, well, it's interesting, the legisla, again, it just says that to the extent that the materials are available in electronic format, is basically what the statute says. Arguably you could say even the walk-ons are to be provided because it's not yet ready. That's, that's perfectly fine. And this does not preclude additions to the agenda and walk-on items to the agenda. The attorney general has said that the statutes don't preclude that from happening, provided that you, and we've done this many, many times, give the public an opportunity to address an item that's added to the agenda or walk-on materials. Again, it's interestingly enough, there's no penalty in the statute, so no one really knows what would happen if the materials were quote, were quote, available in electronic format seven days in advance but were not included.
So my point is, in some cases we've got, whether it's time-sensitive material or things that are part of a sequence where we've had to delay because not all of the information's come in in time, you know, to prep for the board book. So my question is, can we have an item on the agenda with a minimal amount of information but add to that?
If not all the material's available at that time, I think that's appropriate to say, not all materials available, not all materials pertinent to this matter were available at the time of printing the agenda. I think it's.
And it be made available prior to the board meeting.
Yeah.
It might be made before or.
And posted on the website and copies made available at the meeting. I think that's, that's a good question and that's a good procedure. Again, it happens because the items pop up or the complexity of a matter could cause that to happen. The key issue is the public has the opportunity to see and comment on it. It's reasonable. Again, items come up, they don't anticipate. Or it may be more complicated to address or create a document than you initially thought. Participation by public comment, the, that and G on page ten, that's a product of the legislature, correctly, a problem where a small town decided that, okay, under the statute, we have to allow the public to attend our hearing, but we're not going to let them say anything. And so the court upheld, that person decided to speak and the, on a topic not equated judicially, not like a zoning hearing, we have separate rights to the zoning codes to appear. The chairman and the committee or council said, that, no, we're not taking, we're not going to talk on it. That went to court and the court said, they're right, you don't have to. The legislature next year says, yeah, you do. You have to let them speak gently on matters. And those are addressed more fully when we get to the meeting protocol and to those items for which the public has the ability. But it's one of those things where hard facts make new law or hard facts make bad law. But, yeah. And so one, one group said, aha, we can shut up our naysayers and our dad flies. And the next year, the legislature said, dad flies, have at it. By the way, one of the seminars I went to a number of years ago, it was very entertaining. It was a compilation by the Hillsborough County Attorney of a number of speakers that appeared before the Hillsborough County Commission under their public comment at the time, this before the statute. And it was about a fifteen-minute version of, person showed up talking about UFOs, talking about unicorns, talking about all kinds of items, but not remained anything on the agenda, but it was public comment. The board just sat there and said, thank you, next. So, you know, that can happen. You don't need to sit there quietly and say, okay, we're not going to take action. And I'm hoping I'm not encouraging anybody to do that. Participation by teleconference, video conference, again, that pretty much confirmed what we had earlier. I don't know if anybody has, those are, again, those are sort of the basic framework for meetings. If any board members have any questions on that aspect, I'd love to ask questions.
Number one is, it mentions in here the Florida Commission on Ethics, and I got this from twenty sixteen, is this will get incorporated in this?
They're making a lot of racket there, Ed.
Is this?
Come on, hit me with that, but you ended up hitting the mic instead.
Just thinking. Is this a guide to Sunshine Amendment and Code of Ethics for public officers and employees pertinent to us?
Yes.
Okay, is it attached to and made a part of this document?
No, what I would suggest is.
If I had got this, I wouldn't have known that it was in here.
What I would suggest is, I can reference chapter one twelve and what we might do too is provide hyperlinks to those various statutory provisions, including that book up, because you can create a hyperlink for it and that might be a way to have.
What's wrong? You're just saying that this section, this title, this paragraph includes this document, the latest copy there, not enter a bit there too.
Yeah, that is, that's really a brochure. It's a guide. You know, that, we can do that, I think.
I don't want to get into where we're selective on what we're picking and what we're not, because then we got to go and take this damn document apart.
You got this, right?
Yes.
And that, what you're talking about, the Code of Ethics.
I, I had this loose. I don't know where I got it.
No, that's, I think, I think it's proper to reference it, what's referenced in this rule or procedure is chapter one twelve. And that's the whole statute, chapter dealing with financial disclosure and conflict of interest. But I think it's a good idea, under the issue of voting conflict of interest, financial disclosure, to reference the guide that's available from the Florida Commission on Ethics. I think that's a good idea.
The other one I got is, months ago, I got looking into this when Kathleen first brought it up as a discussion item. And I started reading this, and I get nitpicky. I see these specific authorities and law implemented and I'm not going to say, try to remember exactly which one, but I read several sections, not only in A one oh one through A one oh four, but all the way through, that I read these sections of the law and they weren't even pertinent to the subject of the paragraph they were in. Has somebody cross-referenced this and actually verified that, for example, on the first page, one twenty point five four dash one dash A is on this subject?
Yes.
And that's what I found was incorrect on the.
Yeah, what one twenty point five four A?
No, I'm just using that as an example. Has somebody validated these, that they are real?
I went through and did that double check first time. And that, by way of example, that's the chapter that's referenced in one ninety that provides the administrative rule document in hearing process. And so that will be, again, triple-checked before anything to talk before, by double-checking this.
And when you say specific law, sorry, specific authority, you've got three sites there, but law implemented, you only have one of the three. Does that mean the other two are not law?
No, one ninety point zero one one five, if I recall correctly, is the one that says that one of the powers they have is to adopt rules. And so this authority for is also one twenty point five four is the administrative, administrative code. In one twenty point eight one, what that is, that typically if you're a state agency and you want to adopt rules, you have to publish in the administrative law weekly, which is in Tallahassee. But for local governments, they said, no, 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 you publish in the local paper. And that's what that one twenty point eight one subsection two references. So those are all the questions that, and what I can do also is, once we finalize all this, is put together a notebook of all those pertinent statutes and have that say, this is the backup statutes for these various portions of the rules. And that can be available to Chris or each board member if they have that.
If, if you're telling me somebody has checked them in-house, I'll, I'll check it when I go through this, because I looked at the old one and the old one, there were sites that had nothing to do with the subject of what was in the deal. So I, maybe somebody copied this from someplace else and they didn't do their homework.
I've been double-checking. One other thing that's interesting too, is always a pain in the neck, is at times, I'm not saying it happened here, but at times the legislature will, when they amend the statute, renumber it. So you have, you'll add a subsection and then it waterfall's down to, snowballs down to the rest of the number.
I saw, I saw the one in here that was one ninety point five four, I'm sorry, one ninety point four four, and now it's one ninety point five four. Is that typo?
Or one twenty.
Whatever, whatever the number.
Yeah, there are a couple of those. I pick up, yeah, and again, I will triple-check that too.
That's all I have.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you, is there anything you want to be condened?
I don't know if there's any questions on the basic rules or trying to go into reading protocol. A lot of reading to do. Yeah, and again, the, the community development dis, I'm sorry.
Mr. Guy.
Yes, sir.
I noticed as you were going through here, you didn't make any comment about the agenda page twenty, where at the top of the page.
Oh, I, I didn't get there yet.
That's what's due next.
Oh, we can hop to that now.
I thought you were finished.
You were hoping I was finished.
With, with the first sentence, I'll just ask you.
I appreciate the input too, those two good comments. And what I might do is come back and add some additional language to address what Mr. Banks said and what Mr. Tinkles said. The next part is, it's sort of, again, it's a draft of, it's a follow-up to the rules, procedure, which says that the board can adopt meeting protocol and agenda. This is something that could be done by a simple resolution. Once the rules are in place, you don't have to do the advertised hearing or rulemaking for that. And this expands on some of the provisions that are in the rules or procedure. And for example, disorder of business may not be what you want. And this is one format that some people use. And we have a different format now, but this is one where others can use. But it does talk about how the, the chair controls the meeting, adjusts the meeting speakers and how the board communicates with each other on topics. So it definitely support. And then also the highlights, the citizen's right to be heard, that starts at page nineteen of the agenda page, it flows over to page twenty. And Mr. Guy, your question was at the top part of page twenty?
I am. The part, the top part of page twenty, it says public info show, be limited to three minutes, where our rules that we publish before with every agenda says five.
Five, it can be, this again for discussion purposes only, so it can be something, the counting.
I just want you, I just want us to make sure we've got that all synchronized before we finish up.
It, 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 it's the board's pleasure, it's five, it's at five. Once again, I put three in there and. It, 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 it's, it's worth the pleasure, it's five, it's at five, once again, I put three in there, and I'll, and, three minutes. I'll never forget, one time I was in front of the county commission in Cuyahoga County, and they have a little clock, I'll give you here, at the, at the podium, and it's counting, and they have three minutes on all matters, complicated, simple matter. And so I'm watching the clock, you know, left eye, it says two minutes and fifteen seconds, I look at it again, all sense is one minute. And I went like that, and I said, Mr. Chairman, I know you may not wanna hear what I have to say, but can I have my minute fifteen seconds back? But no, five minutes, again, that's, that's what this board rule says, if you wanna make it three, you can make it 10, it's all in your discretion, so we'll keep it at five. Uh, and again, it talks about matter of addressing the board, and then in two, it also has three minutes with the board, the chair having the ability to, uh, spend time. And if you look at the prior page two, and this, again, it's the citizen's rights to be heard, if there's a large group of people, you know, and this, it says there's fifteen people, and they wanna have one person as their spokesperson. This provides, like, more than five people, eight, people can sign up and then dedicate their time to a speed group, or allocate it. That's unusual, I've seen that happen many times where.
So they pool their time.
Yeah, pool it, and they'll say, uh, you know, I give my time to Mr. Smith, so that way you have one spokesperson, because all.